Hey, welcome everyone. I call this November 25th, 2025 meeting of council to order at 6:03. This meeting will be held in a hybrid manner where members of council, staff, and the public can participate electronically. This meeting is being livestreamed and recorded and will be available on the township website. Notice is hereby provided that under the authority of the Municipal Act 2001, and in accordance with the Municipal Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act, that all information attained is considered part of the public record. All rules apply to the meeting as if everyone was attending in person, and if there is a problem with the technology impacting the proceedings of the meeting, the meeting may be recessed. So I would ask everyone that can to stand for the playing of the national anthem. We acknowledge that we are being hosted on the ancestral lands of the Hodo Nishani, Mississauga, and Omaa Wenyin people. We acknowledge and welcome the presence of all Indigenous people, including the Métis, Inuit, and other First Nations from across this vast land who also make this place home. The lands we are on today are recognized in the Turol Wampam Dish with One Spoon Treaty, Treaty 27, and the Crawford Purchase. Hey, so we have an agenda before us. There's no additions or deletions, just looking to the Clerk's Department for the agenda? Could I receive a motion, Deputy Mayor Townend?
Motion to adopt.
So moved, seconded by Counselor Willis. All in favor, motion is carried. Are there any declarations of pecuniary interest or the general nature thereof for this evening's meeting? Saying none, just before we go any further, Counselor Ennis, if I happen to miss your hand being up and you want to speak, please just speak out and catch my attention, okay? I'm used to looking left and right, but you're straight in front of me. At this time, we do have a presentation from the Habitat for Humanity regarding a proposed housing in Bath. If you could just come forward, just come up to the table here, push the button on the mic that it will light up a light on the, on the mic, and then just introduce yourselves and go ahead and provide us with the information.
Good evening, and thank you for having us here this evening. My name's Gary Lees and the CEO at Habitat for Humanity Kingston-Limestone Region, and this is a colleague, Nancy Dionne, who is a civil engineer and runs in-site property management as well. She works closely with Habitat and keeps me in check when it comes to land and purchase and, and project management and all those fun things. It's a pleasure to be here in Bath and Loyalist, and I say that very sincerely because we've worked a couple of things here in the past, and to be quite frank, you folks are awesome to, to work with. Little last red tape, friendly handshake, and kitchen table conversation sometimes, so I appreciate you for that. Thank you. Let's take a look at some of the projects and what we're thinking here in Bath with the proposal. You can see on screen, we have Habitat for Humanity. It's a four-unit townhome that we built in the east side of Kingston a couple of years ago. Some staffers worked on that project, so that was kind of fun to have that relationship, and we would like to do that again. With Habitat for Humanity, what we have to realize is we're in affordable housing market. This project is affordable housing. We want folks to be into homeownership. I'm a firm believer in the Jimmy Carter philosophy, where it's a hand up, not a handout. They'd be paying taxes back to Loyalist, and let's move on with the presentation, and that's kind of the calls notes on Habitat. Habitat for Humanity Kingston and some of the social impact that we have. Corporate mandate and values, not-for-profit charitable organization founded in 1994. We bring communities together to help families build strength, stability, and self-reliance through affordable homeownership. History of Habitat, we have about 25 families that have been into affordable homeownership with us. That works out to about 100 people in our surrounding area. Recent projects in Kingston, '21, we did a fourplex in Rose Abbey, you've seen that earlier. In '24, we did eight tiny units. We built those with the BCIP program out of Ernest Town Secondary School. Would be our desire to bring those folks back in line and have them right here as well, working in Bath. 2025, '26, semi-detached on Wilson Street, that's our current project. And even going back in history a little bit farther, we did, we took an Anglican church down in downtown Kingston. We built a mission center there for the remaining portion of that congregation, and then we, we put up three semi-dwellings in that area. Economic impact and housing in Bath, 2013, families moved in. Appraisal value of those homes, when we did a home here in Bath, was about $184,000. Property taxes returned to the municipality over the 12 years was $34,000. We moved another family here and did a build in Bath. Appraisal value of that home was $183,000, and property taxes returned to the community with about $30,000 in that home. I guess one of the shining lights that I really like about those projects is those are RSP programs for those families as well. The homeownership has went up significantly, the value in that. And so these folks have a safe, stable place to do homework for children, and the economic impact isn't just monetary as well. But I think we all realize some of those things. Family selection criteria, needs for housing, applicants must demonstrate a genuine need such as paying rent that is disproportionately high compared to their income, inability to qualify for conventional mortgage. So one of the things with Habitat when we dig in, why it's affordable is because we hold a portion of their mortgage, or traditionally speaking, their entire mortgage at 0% interest. That's really hard for us to do now, so there's no compound interest over a 25-year period. So these families and family income doesn't have to be up in the $100,000 range to qualify for a conventional mortgage like we might see at one of the major institutions. Ability to pay applicants must show they can afford it with, with a stable income, reasonable debt load, good credit history, or plan on improving credit. So we'll work with local agents if we have a family that looks strong so that we can increase their credit rating as well. Willing to partner, build pride of ownership. There's an intrinsic reward to homeownership. How many of us go home on the weekend and we work on our homes? That's what we do. That's, that's a Canadian way. So we're proud to be Canadian, and I have to say, you folks are probably used to that anthem going up at all of these meetings, but when I sit back and do what I do on a daily basis and I hear that, it resonates. It really resonates. So contribution to volunteer hours, attending homeownership education sessions. So sometimes when we turn the keys over in homeownership and we turn into the bank in the last phase of Habitat, once we've built their home and we've fundraised and we've, we've done all that, some of these folks don't know how to, to look after a home, so we don't leave them there. They need to know how to change that furnace filter. They need to make sure that there's some oil pipe, but it's running the eve trough away from the home. They need to make sure the window well is cleaned out. So we don't just leave them. We have to teach some skills here as well, and we're heavily involved in that. Possible concepts, where we would like to build, we'd like to, to be on Church Street. And again, I have to emphasize, this is just a concept plan at this point in time, but what it might look like, subject to municipal terms and conditions of land transfer, timelines to build, permits, et cetera. One fourplex in 2027. We've built this before, so if you were to approve this and donate that property, we feel confident we can pull the build off, and I would thank you if you did that because it's so nice to build something that we've already built. It just makes life a little bit easier. So we could pull that off in 2027. I'm confident in that. And a second fourplex, we do in 2028, 2030. We'd want to work with your needs a little bit as well for permitting and, and some of those things. Site servicing, of course, is important, connection to municipal water and sanitary and sewer services, off-site stormwater management. All of those things need to get in place, of course, but we'll hustle and do our part with Build. We will enlist volunteers to help us with the project, try to keep the costs down. I have containers of insulation right now. I have 400 sheets of drywall I need to get out of Home Depot's inventory. I've got stuff to build homes right here in Loyalist, and we just want to tap into that and keep the costs down so that when we sell the home to the family and then hold that mortgage at zero or a portion of the mortgage at zero, we can create as much equity as we can so we can reinvest in Loyalist and keep this ball rolling with affordable homeownership. Homeownership financial model, affordable mortgage structure, no down payment. It's a big stumbling block for folks out there is, is coming up with that down payment. When we're paying high rent and then we, we need to save so that we can put a down payment on a home, it's a daunting task, and Canadians are losing hope and vision of actual affordable homeownership. 80% of renters out there right now wish they owned their home, right? And that's a wish that's be, becoming very difficult. So the more equity that we can create in the home by keeping costs down, by donated product using volunteers and using folks like Nancy Dionne, who, who treats me like gold with servicing and civil engineering, anything that we can do to keep those costs down, we reinvest in building more affordable homeownership. And that's an investment in this country, this township, and, and our vicinity, our, our whole area. It's one I'm very proud of as well. So shared equity model, it could be possible. So if somebody can't afford the whole thing, Habitat holds rights at the beginning of this, so you can't just commit and cash your equity in. If we need to, we can make tough decisions. If someone's not paying us back that principal, we can't rob from Peter to pay Paul to keep it alive. We have to be more like a financial institution at that point in time, in which case we'd repurpose the home and find another hardworking family in our community to take that over. Volunteer hours, we'd like to see our families contribute 500 volunteer hours. We do not ask for a, we don't ask for a down payment because we know how hard that is. We do ask for, you know, some hard work and a little sweat from your brow, what we say, out there and on the, on the build site. This is reduced labor costs as well, fosters community engagement and creates that intrinsic reward that we all feel or most of us feel on the weekend when we're home doing projects. Volunteer and educational partners, the BCIP program is awesome. You've got the school right here with Ernest Town. We know some other partners in that community. We would partner with Ernest Town. We've done that in the past. The Tiny Home Project that I spoke about earlier was built right here on site, and then we transported that to downtown Kingston, one of those pods, and they were built by the BCIP students. Another proud success in Habitat land that we don't have here in our slides is one of those BCIP students turned into a summer student. That summer student turned into a permanent employee. That permanent employee just took his construction supervisor program with us, and he now will be working with the BCIP students, one of the, the programs he graduated from. So I'm vested in that, what we say. Financial viability, preliminary cost estimates, including land, about 1.4 million bucks for the four-unit townhome. Soft costs, external consulting, hard costs, construction and labor. It's hard to build it all with volunteers today in Ontario with build code, et cetera, so we do have some hard costs in there. Core funding sources, government grants, federal rapid housing initiative, municipal lands, et cetera. Habitat for Humanity contributions, donation and fundraising events, restore revenues. Our restores are social entity that allow us to build. Maybe not quite in the same capacity if we don't have some funding or federal levels or whatever, but we can stand on our own feet. Again, that Jimmy Carter philosophy, this is a hand up, not a handout, and we, we, we feel the same way. So our restores are social entity that generate revenue, and we pump that revenue back into our home, home bill programs. We are opening a second restore in Nappany. That opens on January 1, will soft open on January 1 as well. So we're, we're going to book and Loyalist and have, you'll know where to go for your, your product, either in Kingston or Nappany. Revenue sources, homeownership mortgage payments create revenue for us as well that we reinvest back in. Project delivery process, planning and consulting requirements, community consulting to build positive relationships with the neighborhood. Consider establishing as an information center, zoning in place, planning requirements for access to roads and services, planned subdivision in site, land severances, registration of blocks of land, pre-construction retention of external consultants like Nancy, and finalize off-site engineering designs and approvals by municipality. Construction in Habitat's role, overseas construction, execution of law, building, management, sales, and sale of the home. Nancy, do you have anything to add with, with this portion? Okay, what is needed, contributions sought from the township. This is my ask, right? We, we kind of, you're probably sitting there pondering your thoughts, knowing that I was coming to this conclusion. What I would like to see, rezoning and subdivision of site plan approvals, construction of road and services to the property line, land transfer. When that land gets transferred, that kind of opens the doors for me. I can go to our Carney government and other sources and say, hey, this is what we're going to do. We've got this. This is what we're going to do. This is what we're going to achieve with or without you. We'd like to be with you. And so if you want to pay for this project, that'd be great, 1.4 million bucks, and now I'll just reinvest that back into Loyalist. That's what we do at Habitat for Humanity. This is a revolving door. So that's a big one. Exemptions, we'd like to see development charges, info charges and taxes, and build permit fees waived. That will give me equity, and so if I don't come up with that funding package and, and I don't get some CMHC funding or any of those things, I can still leverage that and get construction financing at a reasonable rate and still do the project. So it's just a matter of how good we can do the project. We're good, and your contribution would take us from good to great, and we'll reinvest that right here in Loyalist. Any questions at all, and if there are technical questions, that's why Nancy's here, who hasn't spoke yet.
Thank you for sharing that information. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments this evening? Counselor Pragmat?
Thank you and through you, your worship. Just a question on the clientele. Will this be geared towards people who are living in Loyalist now, or how does that work in terms of who can access?
It would be geared to folks from Loyalist. If we had a difficult time qualifying folks, then maybe that, that reach would go a little bit more to surrounding area. But I don't anticipate that as being a problem. We've got great family services. So if we can find a family, or families plural, and we need to do a little bit of work with them to get them up to par where their credit scores, et cetera, can work out, we're willing to do that work, in particular if they're from the Loyalist area.
Any other questions or comments? Saying none. Thank you for the presentation, for the information, and just, I'll just put it out there that later in the agenda, on item 11.2, I believe it is, there is a discussion or a motion that includes Habitat for Humanity. So I'm leaving it open to counsel to make a, a motion for receive and anything else I wished, but if we only receive, it's later in the agenda.
I appreciate that, and I'm looking forward to seeing you all swing a hammer on a build site.
Thank you. Hey, Counsel, do we have a motion? Counselor Pragmat?
I'm still laughing over the hammer. I don't know if they want me there. I would recommend that the presentation from Habitat for Humanity regarding proposed housing in Bath be received.
So moved, seconded by Counselor Willis. Any comments from the mover, seconder, other members? Saying none. I have actually worked on Habitat for Humanity builds. One was right in the township here. It's a great, it was a great opportunity to be able to spend time in the community with people that you may not normally be working with and maybe learn a few skills too, so it was great. So with that, we'll call the question. All in favor, motion is passed. Statutory public meeting. A public meeting is being held in accordance with Section 3412 of the Planning Act to consider a proposed zoning bylaw amendment. The subject property is located on part of lots 8, 9, and 10, Concession 1, Ernest Town in the former village of Bath, now Loyalist Township, County of Lennox and Addington, and is municipally owned as, sorry, and is municipally known as One Loyalist Boulevard. The application process to rezone a portion of the lands from Open Space, OS Zone to Open Space Exemption 1 Zone to an amended Open Space Exception 1 Zone. The amendment would establish site-specific provisions to permit an expansion of the existing clubhouse. Counsel will hear either in person or by counsel, solicitor, or agent, any person who wishes to speak to this application or who believes they may be affected by it. Welcome staff. Do you have some information to share at the time?
Through you, your worship, I'll be providing a quick overview of the application since the consultant planner will also be following, following up with a more detailed presentation. The applicant intends to extend the current clubhouse facility on the subject lines. The existing OS 1 Zone on the subject land is an older site-specific zoning category that no longer reflects the additional needs of the Loyalist Golf and Country Club. To facilitate the proposed expansion, the amendment introduces site-specific definition for country club and clubhouse as well as site-specific performance standards that would enable the proposed expansion to happen. These revisions will also, will allow the proposed development to proceed through a subsequent site plan amendment application. Staff have thoroughly reviewed the application and are recommending approval of the application as it is consistent with the provincial planning statement and meets the intent of the county and Loyalist Township official plan while representing good planning. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, are there any questions for staff for clarification at this time? Saying none. Thank you for that presentation, and we do have the applicant's agent, I believe, virtually that will be signing in to provide us with some information as well.
Hello?
Hello.
Hi.
Welcome, welcome to the council meeting. You are, you're live now in the meeting, so if you want to just introduce yourself and provide us with the information, that would be great.
Sure. My name's Angela Scobares. I'm a partner at McCauley Show Me Housing, and we are the planning consultants for Caitlin. I have a short presentation, if that's all right.
Yes, please, please.
Can you see that okay?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. So first, a good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. On behalf of Caitlin, we're very excited to, to have this application before council and the public this evening. As Abenash had indicated, the application is to sort of round out the boundaries of the, of the current zoning for the existing clubhouse and to modify the permissions through the zoning bylaw. The subject site is generally located central to the Loyalist Country Club Estates and golf course. The clubhouse is contained within a site-specific zone area of the course, which is irregular in shape and is comprised of approximately 4.5 hectares or about 11 acres. The purpose of the application, as I said, is to round out the zone boundary area and to allow for a modest expansion of the clubhouse and parking area, clarification and addition of permitted uses, which due to the date of the township's zoning bylaw, they're not, specific uses are not captured, and to incorporate appropriate performance standards such as building setbacks, landscape, and buffer areas. I know you've seen this before, but it, it shows the clubhouse area, which is in the yellow in the middle, the OS 1 Zone as it currently stands, and the two additional areas to the north and to the west that we are proposing to add or round out the OS 1 Zone. Proposed site plan, unfortunately, it's a little difficult to capture on here, but the existing clubhouse is down at the bottom in the dark gray. The proposed clubhouse, one story similar to what's existing, is shown in the light gray. That's the expansion, and it will be connected through a, an enclosed covered walkway so that you can go from one part of the clubhouse through to the new part. And the existing outdoor swimming pool is located in the, in the bottom left corner there. We're also proposing the expansion of the existing surface parking area, which will provide additional, I think there's currently, there's 105 parking spaces, and this will be increased to 257. As part of our site plan application, we are also proposing the relocation of the existing maintenance building, which is currently located up in, in the Phase 14 development. This will be at some point relocated down to this area. It is permitted within the current zone. However, we are adding provisions for setbacks, landscape. setbacks, landscaping, buffer, and that will be subject to further review as part of the site plan application process. The addition is intended to add approximately, I think, just over eight hundred and twenty-seven square meters in addition to the existing eight hundred square meters. It will house a new indoor swimming pool, improved pro shop, change rooms, exercise rooms, banquet facilities. Basically upgrading everything that is currently there now and providing opportunity for additional spaces. So again, just quickly, purpose of the application is rounding out the current site-specific OS zero one zone boundary. Provide clarification of definitions and permitted uses. It's a proposed eight hundred and twenty-seven square meter, single-story addition. New indoor swimming pool, larger areas, as I had said, and providing more enhanced facilities, more in keeping with similar golf and country clubs. There are, I don't know if you're familiar with them, but there are a number that provide classes, fitness classes, community classes for different, you know, yoga, that sort of thing. So this will enable the golf and country club to provide similar services to its community. So in terms of the project timeline, we had a pre-consultation meeting with the township staff back in November of last year. The application was deemed complete and was circulated for comments. We received those comments and an application resubmission and circulation was done again in May, and we've been working with township staff to get us where we are today. And I would just like to take this opportunity to really thank the staff. They have been working very diligently with us to ensure that outstanding technical matters have been addressed before bringing this application to council. And this has enabled staff to provide a recommendation report concurrent with this meeting to help us speed up the process. And any remaining detailed design items will be addressed through the site plan approval process. So this certainly isn't the end. All the details such as landscaping and how building materials and how the building is going to look will all be addressed through site plan. The proposal meets all of the relevant policies and regulations of the provincial planning statement, the township OP and the zoning bylaw. Those have all been reviewed as part of this application process, and the expansion is consistent with those documents. Site is also serviced by municipal sewage and water, so that won't be an issue. The official plan designation is open space, which permits the proposed, the existing and the proposed use. And the zoning bylaw, as I said, the current boundaries of the clubhouse are the OS dash one zone that you can see there. We are rounding it out to include some additional OS lands, which are ultimately shown in red. That's again the proposed, the zone designation, the two two blocks here to the north and the west. So the proposed amendments, we have two new definitions that we are proposing. One is the definition of country club, and the other is definition of clubhouse. These are fairly industry standard definitions and really just better capture the intent of the, the development and what types of services can be accommodated within that development. So not too different really from what is there now, just making sure that there's consistency and no ambiguity. Then in terms of performance standards, we meet the lot area, lot frontage. Height will not be an issue as it'll be the same as what is there now. Distance to nearest residence, we are changing that to distance of building or structure to a residential zone. So regardless of where the, the house is, maybe an adjacent house on another property, it will be to the boundary of the residential zone, not to the, the building itself. We are also adding distance of outdoor amenity area or patio to a residential zone. Recognizing that outdoor patios, you know, got a lot of people out there. You don't want them in your, right against your backyard either. And we're slightly reducing the requirement for the minimum aisle width within the parking area from seven meters down to six point five. Preliminary landscape plan was submitted as part of our package. This has not been updated to reflect the relocated maintenance building, but will be as part of our site plan package that will be submitted to the town shortly, and it simply reflects additional buffer planting, landscaping that will be used to enhance the development. Just to show the existing and the proposed building renderings, the, the existing clubhouse is identified by the blue arrows. There's the clubhouse and the adjacent garage structure. And then this will be connected, as I said, by a covered walkway of to the new building that is shown with the red arrows. And again, this is very difficult to see, but you can see the the height of the existing and the proposed are, are, are similar. As part of our application submission, we were required to submit a noise impact study, planning justification brief, and a draft zoning bylaw schedule. These have all been reviewed by staff, and other detailed studies will be reviewed as part of the site plan approval process. So key takeaways, the new clubhouse addition will incorporate an indoor swimming pool, will provide improved and additional fitness areas, improved dining banquet food bar areas, and additional meeting and all-purpose rooms. There will be additional one hundred and fifty-two parking spaces and improved parking lot layout. The zoning bylaw amendment is required to introduce the two new definitions to allow for better clarity, expand and clarify the range of permitted uses, and establish building standards to the residential zones and modify the driveway aisle width. Our next steps, site plan application, revisions and resubmission following the approval of, of the zoning bylaw amendment. It was submitted already to the township, but it got put on pause until all these zoning matters were addressed. So that'll be starting up again. There will be a technical review, circulation, and finalization of the site plan amendment submission. And ultimately, once staff are satisfied that all matters have been addressed, registration of an amending site plan agreement on title. And I'm happy to respond to any questions. I do have representative from Caitlin on my email. I know he's watching, Mr. Devin Daniels, but he's not able to speak. So if you do have any questions, I can, I can certainly get him to respond through me.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, are there any questions for the president or this evening? Being none. Yeah, thank you very much for providing the information. There's no questions at this time, so we will move forward to the public input.
Thanks very much.
So I'll follow the normal format where during the public meeting, I will go in chambers, ask if anyone wishes to speak to this item, and you can come forward and share your information. I will then go to the virtual audience, and if there's anyone in the virtual audience that wishes to speak to this item, please use the raised hand feature, and we can bring you into the virtual, you can bring, bring you in virtually to speak to counsel. So first, I'll go in chambers. Is there anyone in chambers that wishes to speak on this item this evening? Saying none. Go to the virtual audience. Is there anyone in the virtual audience who wishes to speak on this item this evening? Please use the raised hand feature so we can bring you in the meeting.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not seeing anyone in the virtual audience with their hand raised. Oh, sorry, I misspoke. There is one person with their hand raised.
Good evening. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can. You're, you're live in the council chambers let now, so please go ahead and provide your information.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And thank you for having us tonight. Just a couple of questions. One for Angela is when do we anticipate seeing a, the progress of this building start? I, I know that this is obviously just a committee, the whole meeting, and we're looking at just a proposal for zoning bylaw. Do we have an anticipated date that a building would start and, and changes to the, to the structure of the building, I guess?
Do you have any other questions that when we raise them, we raise all at the same time?
Oh, sure. Yes, sorry about that. And the second question is, I notice on the diagram that's up on the screen, or was up on the screen, that the driving range will be eliminated from where the maintenance, new maintenance building will be located, and then, of course, a parking lot. Is there a proposal for a new location for the driving range? And is there going to be any changes to the location of the first hole that's located just to the east of the parking lot? So those would be my total questions.
Okay, thank you. What I'll do is I'll ask if there's any other in the virtual, sorry, Angela's in here now. Do you wish to go ahead and address those two while you're in here then?
Sorry, it's, it's, I'm totally at your discretion, whatever you would prefer.
This is, this is for zoning, but if you have answers to those, please go ahead and share.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Salisbury, for those questions. With respect to timing, we do, as I said, have to make a resubmission for the site plan application. That can take several months. And then, and then the registration of the site plan agreement, all of that has to be addressed before Caitlin can apply for a building permit. And that would require detailed design drawings for submission for permit. So I can, I can double check with Caitlin, but I suspect you're not going to see construction within probably the next ten to twelve months would be a realistic timeframe. But I can certainly provide a better clarification of that. With respect to the driving range, you're correct. It is proposed that the existing driving range be removed. The Golf Club Association, the committee that runs the golf club is looking at other alternatives for the driving range. There's also been some discussion, I understand, of the provision possibly of pickleball courts. That all comes from input that they receive from the members. It's not Caitlin that determines that. So the programming of the clubhouse and those additional facilities will come from the, the committee and the input that they receive from its members.
Thank, thank you, Angela, and thank you, your worship, for allowing me to ask a couple of questions there. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you. Thank you, Angela. Just ask if there's anyone else in the virtual audience who wishes to speak this evening on this matter. Please use the raised hand feature so we can bring you into the meeting.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. There's no one else with their hand raised in the virtual audience at this time.
Okay, thank you. So that concludes the public meeting portion.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. It appears somebody has just raised their hand again.
Okay.
My apologies. It's me. Mr. Daniel just advised. I, I did miss one of Mr. Salisbury's questions. No material changes to the first hole, but the driving range may be moved at a later time once phase fourteen commences. So just to put things into perspective, I just wanted to add that.
Okay, thank you for that additional information. I'll go back one, one more time. If there's anyone in the virtual audience who wishes to speak this evening, please use the raised hand feature.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not seeing anyone with their hand raised.
Okay, thank you. So that concludes the public portion. Counsel, we do have the report before, or would someone like to make a motion? Counselor Prag.
Thank you, your worship. I would move that the Report of the Development Services Division dated November twenty fifth, twenty twenty-five Republic Meeting and Recommendation Report, Zoning Bylaw Amendment Application D fourteen dash zero one one dash two oh two four, Loyalist Golf and Country Club, clubhouse expansion be received, and that zoning bylaw amendment application D fourteen zero zero, sorry, zero one one two four, two oh two four be approved, and a bylaw twenty twenty-five dash sixty-nine being a bylaw to amend the amend zoning bylaw two zero zero one dash thirty-eight is amended to rezone a portion of the property municipally known as One Loyalist Boulevard from open space zone and open space exceptions, exception zone, exception one, sorry, zone to an amended open space exemption one zone to be enacted and passed.
So moved. Do we have a second? Counsel Budrick, any comments from the mover?
No.
Seconder, other members? Call the question. All in favor? Motion is passed. Now we come to open, yes, open forum. Fifteen minutes of the meeting is set aside for open forum. Any individual may address counsel regarding an item on the agenda, excluding matters under the statutory public meeting section on the same agenda. Each person has three minutes to speak. Anyone wishing to speak can register in advance, which we did not have anyone do. Or I will go in chambers and ask if anyone wishes to speak and then go to the virtual, which where they can use the raised hand feature to be able to participate in the meeting. So at this time, we, we didn't have anyone sign up either, did we at the door? Okay, thank you. So I will go in chambers first. If there's anyone that wishes to speak under open forum this evening, please just come forward and we can receive your information. Saying none. I'd go to the virtual audience. If there's anyone that wishes to speak under open forum, please use the raised hand feature, and we can bring you into the meeting.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not seeing anyone with their hand raised in the virtual audience.
Thank you. So that concludes open forum. Next up is delegation, Joe Torres. Now in chambers. If you want to just come forward, come up to the mic, just press the button so the light comes on and provide us with your information.
Yes, my name is Joe Torres, and this is my business partner, Keith Smallbill. We own a property in my township on three three five, three three nine Amherst Drive. It's a rental property. And three months ago, we received a water bill from the Loyalist Township for that particular location of over a hundred thousand dollars, which we kind of, I'm surprised I'm still alive today after I saw that bill. But we periodically receive notices from certain locations of properties that we own of a possible leak somewhere. And so as soon as we receive those notices from whatever municipality that we are at, we react to that right away. So we received one from Loyalist Township. We spoke to our, our manager on site with the maintenance guy, and we instructed We spoke to our, our manager on site with the maintenance guy, and we instructed them to go through every unit for inspection of every kitchen taps, bathroom taps, toilets, tub taps, and they went through 144 units, came back with literally nothing to speak of, small, minor, little issues, which left us extremely puzzled. We left it, let it go. And again, it persisted about six months later, we received again another notice. Again, we just did not know what to do, and I instructed them to go through it again. The problem that it occurred, what we saw was one particular little building had extreme, was, which we thought the normal rate, the other one was extremely high. So we were paying attention to the one that was extremely high, but we were wrong. And we did this twice. We had our, our managers and our maintenance staff go through every unit. When we finally realized that the one that was high was actually the correct one, the one that was low was not correct. Then we phoned the municipality a couple of times and asked them to go and check it out because we just had no idea what the issues were. A leak is very complicated to find. If they're not in the units, then we have no idea where they were coming from. So we asked them to go and check the meters possible, a bad meter, and various. They came in and they said there was nothing wrong with the meter that I can remember. Again, the problem persisted, and so eventually we had no choice. We finally called the municipality to please go and check it out. We want the meters changed. Well, they came in and checked the building that was high, but then we didn't realize it, but go and check the one that was low, and that's where we found out where the problem was. Apparently, there was some valve that was left open, and they had, municipality had already been there checking it before to see if there was any issue, and they said no. So it left us perplexed. As it turned out, the, they found an open valve of some sort, which we still do this day. I have no idea where that valve is. And it was by, the water was being bypassed through the meter, which, of course, was not being registered. And that's where, when we found out where the issues were, then eventually the township, just within a month ago, I believe it was, that they came in and changed all of that. They put some security measure on there that now that cannot happen again, we hope. And they changed, I believe, both meters in both buildings. And so this is what we have, we've, we've, we really tried, and we really had no idea how this even occurred, even to this day. We get, like I said before, we get notices from all over of properties that we own all, all over the place. And usually, and even today, I received one from the Belleville area, and we have our people checking it out, and we still have no idea where it is, and totally different than this particular. So we're here to ask for assistance on this because there's just no way we can afford to pay this hundred thousand dollars on, on something that was beyond our control or beyond anything that we've ever experienced. I've never seen anything like this. As to why that happened, I can't answer that because I, we just don't know. So that's what we've got. It's a complex thing, and I would certainly love to go back to getting my help back in place after some good news. That's what we're here for.
Okay. Thank you for providing that information. And we do also have the letter that you submitted to the township in our package as well. So counsel has had the opportunity to read that and come up to speed as well. At this time, I would just ask counsel, are there any questions for clarification of the delegation? Seeing none, thank you very much for being here and providing the information. And I'll just turn to counsel now if a council member would wish to make a motion regarding this item. Deputy Mayor Town.
Thank you, worship, through you. I would move that the delegation of Joe Torres and Torbell Holdings Limited regarding a water bill issue at 335 and 339 Amherst Drive be received, and that staff be directed to prepare a report with further detail for council's consideration at the next possible meeting.
So moved. Do I have a second? Counsel Parks, any comments from the mover?
Just my comments to, to the delegation. This is fairly standard procedure so that we can treat everybody that comes to us with these kinds of requests with, with equity. So we'll look forward to some recommendations for some decisions for counsel at a later date. Again, these things sometimes take time, but we really appreciate what you've, what you've delivered this evening, and we'll look forward to when this comes back.
Seconder, other members of counsel? Counsel Willis.
Through your honor, and this might be a friendly amendment, but with a bill that size, I would expect that the penalties are, and the interest is amassing quick, quickly. And could we hold on that until staff are able to bring us, bring us back the report?
I, I can take that as a friendly amendment to the mover. Or, or that might be something that comes out of the staff report as well with an option because I'm assuming the staff report may have options in it. So I'll just look to the mover. Is that a friendly amendment?
Well, your secondary question, I would prefer to ask staff before I accept it as friendly, if that would be, if something like that would be coming back in the report.
Okay, so typically in these reports, they come back with more information and also potential options? Or, or the other thing is it is a council, it is a council decision at that time as well. They can be waived after their, at the time the report comes. Counsel, it's council's decision on what they want to do as well. So again, I'll just, would, did you decide? Would you, is it a friendly?
Sure, I'll accept that as friendly.
Friendly, okay. Seconder, sorry, I had to remember who seconded. Okay. So we've got the recommendation as amended. Any other council member have any comments this evening? Seeing none, I'll call a question. All in favor? Motion is passed. Thank you. So there will be a report coming back to council in the future from staff to provide additional information that they may have as well. Thank you. 2026 interim tax levy. And get the right one open. There we go. Welcome. Do you have any additional information for the item?
Not at this time, your worship. If there's any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Thank you. Counsel, we do have the report before us. Would someone like to put a motion on the floor? Deputy Mayor Town.
I would move that the report from the Finance Department dated November 25th, 2025, re 2026 interim tax levy be received, and two, that bylaw 2025-70 being a bylaw to provide for the 2026 interim tax levy and to provide for the payment of taxes, to provide for penalty and interest of one and one quarter percent be enacted and passed.
So moved. Seconded by Counsel Budrick. Any comments from the mover? Seconder, other members? Call the question. All in favor? Motion is passed. Thank you. Surplus land donation and preparation for development. Welcome. Do you have anything additional to share this evening?
Nothing to add, your worship, just happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Counsel, would someone like to put a motion on the floor this evening? Counsel Prudrick.
I would recommend that the report from Corporate Services Strategy and Innovation Department dated November 25th, 2025, re surplus land donation and preparation for development be received, that counsel approve the recommended approach for preparing the surplus lands at Church Street and Bath for donation and development, including the retention of a consultant to undertake a rezoning, subdividing, and servicing study funded by the Housing Accelerator Fund, that counsel approve the attached affordable housing grant and development agreement of purchase and sale for donating a portion of the Church Street land to the County of Lenox and Addison for affordable and purpose-built rental project, subject to the final terms to the satisfaction of the county and township CAOs, and that counsel direct staff to return with a staff report and recommendations with respect to the Habitat for Humanity request for the donation of service lands, land.
So moved. Do I have a second? Deputy Mayor Town. Mover, any comments?
If I may, I just have one question of staff. In the report, how high is a low rise? How many stories? Is that a couple, three? What's, what's the definition of that? I'm just not too sure.
Through your worship, to Counsel Prudrick, just confirming with my friends in planning at the back, and it is four stories, up to four stories.
Any other questions or comments? Counsel Willis.
I know that this was one of the topics that was at the Bath Town Hall. What feedback or questions have you gotten from the public on this? Have we done an engagement on it?
Well, I wasn't, I wasn't at the, the town hall, but there will be a full public consultation through the zoning study that we would launch if, if counsel approves our recommendation. So all that public consultation would occur, I believe, maybe by the second or third quarter of next year.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I will just provide my input from Counsel Willis's question. I have been contacted by two residents. I've answered them fully. I followed up with both township and county staff to make sure that I was getting all the current facts, and I've responded and to, to date, I also provided the information that there would be open houses during the zoning. To date, it seems that they are satisfied. I haven't received any additional at this time. Just, just, I just wanted to give you all the information. Yes, go ahead.
This one's small and nitpicky, but so if the county doesn't build the second building, we get the right to buy back the option on that land. Am I right? It says at 90% of the cost, and the cost that we're selling it for is $2, so it's, okay, I just want to make sure it's not at market value 10 years from now or something. Okay, please.
Through the mayor to Counsel Willis, you're correct. It would be 90% of the $2 or something very nominal. Yes, thank you.
Any other questions are coming. Call a question. All in favor? Motion is passed. Thank you. Next is counsel and committee meeting schedule for 2026. Welcome. Do you have any additional information to share this evening?
Through your worship, no additional information, just here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Counsel, we do have a recommendation before us. Would someone like to put a motion on the floor? Counsel Prudrick.
I would move that the report from the Clerks Division dated November 25th, 2025, re 2026 Council and Committee Meeting Schedule be received, and that the rules, the procedural bylaw 2024-11 be waived to approve the council and committee schedule for 2026, as seen in attachment one.
So moved. Seconded by Counsel Parks. Mover, any comments?
No.
Seconder, other members of counsel? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor? Motion is passed. Thank you. D-14006, 2025, Loyalist Park, request to remove holding symbol. And welcome. Do you have any additional information to share at this time?
Through your worship, no, we're just here for questions. Thank you.
Okay. Again, we do have the report before us. Would someone like to put a motion on the floor? Deputy Mayor Town.
I moved that the report from the Development Services Division dated November 25th, 2025, re D-14006, 2025, Loyalist Park, request to move holding symbol be received, and two, that bylaw 2025-68 being a bylaw to remove the holding symbol with respect to part of lots 35 and 36 concession one, part one on reference plan 29R9203, and part two on reference plan 29R9922, and block 25 on plan 29M-29 be enacted and passed.
So moved. Do we have a second? Counsel Budrick. Mover, any comments? Seconder, other members of counsel? Call the question. All in favor? Motion is passed. Thank you. Accessible taxi program. Welcome. Do you have anything additional to share at this time?
Your worship, the only additional I'd like to add is that as part of the monitoring, program monitoring, we will include usage and work to balance demand with available resources. We need to ensure that all eligible riders have equitable access to the service. And in order to do that, we may need to look at introduced limits on individual daily usage. So I just, that wasn't specifically pointed in the report, but I wanted to make counsel aware that that might be something we might have to be looking at.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, we have the report before us. Would someone put a motion on the floor? Counsel Budrick.
That the report from Public Transportation Division dated November 25th, 2025, re accessible taxi program update be received, and that the mayor and CAO be authorized to execute the agreements for accessible taxi program with Modern City Taxi, Amy's Taxi Service, the City of Kingston, Kingston Access Bus, once received pending final terms that are satisfactory to CAO, and that counsel direct staff to monitor the new accessible taxi program and report back any recommendation, recommended changes over the next year.
So move. Do we have a second? Counsel Parks. Mover, any comments?
No, this is a program that I know that a lot of staff time has gone into over the years, and I know that there are members of our municipality that are getting their lives back because they've got access to transportation.
Thank you. Seconder, other members of counsel? Yes, Counsel Prudrick.
Just one question. This program, is this sort of a stopgap between, you know, I know everything's happened with the Taxi Commission and all that. Is this, when we get to this program over the next year, when would this program end and something else come down the road? If you, if you have an idea on that.
Through you, your worship. The program is going to be completely monitored and like continuously monitored. This may be the only option to us for this program. We may have to look at other service deliveries. You know, it, it'll be depend, it all depends on how well it's working.
Okay. Counsel Willis.
May I question through your honor? The TNC money that's being charged to the Uber drivers and Lyft drivers, where is that going now? Is that still going to the Taxi Commission? Or is it, like, is it still there to offset the cost of this program?
Through you, your worship. There is no TNC money for Loyalist. It's not something that we have in this area, so it's not offsetting this program. We're using the, right now, we're using the reserves from the gas tax.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, call the question. All in favor? Motion is passed. And I would entertain a motion to go into committee of the hall. Counsel Prudrick.
I would move that we move into committee of the hall.
So moved. Seconded by Counsel Parks. All in favor? So moved, seconded by Councilor Parks, all in favor.
Right. Good evening, everyone. I'll call committee of the whole to order at 7:13. Any declarations of pecuniary interest, general nature thereof? No developers on the community, on the committee? Items for consideration, 13.3.1, planning application fee review.
So.
Go ahead.
So I do have a few slides prepared to facilitate the discussion for the members of the committee. The purpose of tonight's presentation is to seek direction on updating the township's planning application fee bylaw. Loyalist last for last formally reviewed its planning fee in 2012 with some updates in 2015. That's a small correction from the staff report that noted 2015. We currently recover approximately 12% of planning application processing costs, which is significantly below the comparator municipalities. In fact, Loyalist is consistently in a lowest range for most application types. This gap results in significant subsidy by the general tax base rather than rather than by the applicants receiving the service. Staff is proposing to move towards a more sustainable and equitable cost recovery model while maintaining affordability for resident-facing applications. Member of the committee are asked to consider proposed options and direct staff to bring forward a new planning application fee bylaw. A draft bylaw and a fee schedule is attached to the report, and it's based on a recommended option. A detailed comparison was completed using the township's comparator group. The comparators were chosen based on geographic location, proximity to large urban centers, economic conditions, similar size and services. The same list has been used now for a few years to compare other fees, charges and taxes, and most recently for the non-union compensation review. The chart on the slide indicates revenue and expenses based on the 2025 approved budgets for all these municipalities. And it also includes data from two municipalities, Kingston and Prinsdor County, where developers active in Loyalist are also active in. And that is to keep the fees charged by our neighbors in sight so staff can propose fees that remain affordable but fair to our tax base. There is also a large chart attached to the staff report, and it shows the 2025 application fees per application types for each municipality reviewed, if you're interested in the details. Based on the information summarized in this table, the 75th percentile of the comparator's data for cost recovery ratio is 33%. So staff is proposing to set a recovery target in the range of 30 to 35%, with the top of the range being achieved over three years. Forecasted revenue, currently the 2026 budgeted revenue for planning applications is 92,700, no change from 2025. If the committee agrees with the recommendation, moving through a proposed stepped increase over three years, staff forecast the revenue from applications to be 200,500 at 25% recovery in 2026, 24600 at 30% recovery for 2027, and 28700 at 35% recovery for 2028. And these are based on a five-year average of the number of applications processed. There's a lot of information in this one. In order to meet the proposed revenue target of 200,500, staff considered the volume of application over the last five years. We use the average fee per application type from our comparators while keeping an eye on the fees charged by the City of Kingston and Prinsdor County. The next two slides are the results of that analysis and form the basis for the fee schedule that is attached to the draft bylaw. So to explain the chart a little bit, the blue column is the application type. Staff is proposing to split some of the types into minor and major, which seems to be a common practice amongst our comparators. And it does reflect the level of effort needed. So zoning bylaw amendment, official plan amendment, site plan amendment, and draft plan amendment. So we split between minor and major. The gray column are Loyalist's current fees, the 2026 proposed fees and the 2028 proposed fees. There is an increase proposed for 2027, but due to space on that chart, we left it out. But you can find that information in the schedule that's attached to the draft bylaw. And the next column is the average fee per type of application charges by municipalities in our comparator group. To compare apples to apples, we had to make assumptions with respect to size of projects so the fees could be calculated with consistency. For example, for a site plan application, some municipalities charge by the square feet, some charge by the number of units to be developed, so the fees were calculated using a set number of square footage or unit so we could do a calculation of averages. And then the last two columns are the fees charged in Kingston and Prinsdor County. Again, it's just to help in the comparison. So as you can see, most of the proposed 2026 fees for Loyalist are below or very close to the comparator's group and well below the cities. When looking at the 2028 proposed fees, please keep in mind that some municipalities in the comparator group, Kingston and Prinsdor County included, will increase their fees by CPI annually. When considering this, most of our proposed 2028 fees will remain below our comparators. And this is the rest of the application types. We do have new types proposed, so fees for site plan amendments and rough amendments, as well as pre-consultation fees. Overall, these fees presented are set to cover the level of efforts by planning staff to conduct their technical review of the application and process the application through to the approval. What is not included in these fees are external peer reviews of supporting studies for certain types of application, mostly site plans and draft plan of subdivision. These are charged back to the applicant, and the cost of technical review by engineering staff is also charged back to the applicant. An upfront fee is charged to cover engineering time for applications with which do not typically require a significant level of effort from an engineering perspective, so the consent applications, minor variances, rezoning, or official plan amendment. Those ones were proposing to increase the fee for engineering review from $200 to $300, and also a $100 fee for pre-consultation for the engineering review. The rest is proposed to remain at recovery based on actual costs. Although the practice of recovering costs for planning staff is consistent across the board, staff found in doing this review that recovering engineering costs is widely varied. Some municipalities have engineering staff in-house conducting reviews, some use consultants, and some use engineering staff in other municipalities. The engineering fees are included in the proposed fee schedule of the draft bylaw, and no increase will be applied in the subsequent years up to 2030. Just a small update. Based on feedback received after the report was published, staff is proposing a small revision to the fee schedule of the draft bylaw regarding fees for the engineering review for major official plan amendment or major zoning bylaw amendment. As is, an applicant would have to pay $500 for an engineering review for a major OPA or major rezoning application. And the applicant also has to pay actual cost for engineering review of a draft plan application. So staff would like to propose that the 500 fees be waived if an OPA or zoning bylaw amendment is submitted with a draft plan of subdivision application. And this could be done by just adding a footnote to the fee schedule. If the committee agrees, the fee schedule can be updated before the bylaw is actually approved by council. So the last slide just details the options. Again, so we've proposed two options. Option A is to move to 25% cost recovery in 2026, 30% in 2027, and 35% in 2028. And then we remain at 35% for 2029 and 2030. So it's a five-year review. This option provides a balance and predictable transition for applicants and aligns with comparator benchmarks. Option B moves to 35% recovery in 2026. This is the least recommended due to the significant and steep impact on the applicants. Option C is the status quo, which is also not recommended as it continues a very low recovery rate of 12% and it's out of range of our comparators. And just again, a quick reminder that if the committee agrees to waiving the fees for engineering review of a major OPA or rezoning when submitted with a draft plan application, staff would appreciate that direction as well so we can amend the proposed fee schedule. Any questions, discussions?
Thank you, Ms. Merritt. I'll turn to the committee. Councilor Willis.
Thank you. Through the chair. Just doing the math because most of the costs are related to labor costs, which are going to inflate every year. So it the 2028, 29, 30, we're not putting an inflationary factor on those fees at all, but our costs are going to go up. So so if we're planning to recover 35%, that percentage is going to decrease in 29 and 30, isn't it?
So through Mr. Chair, good question. There's there's a couple of factors that impacts that recovery fee. Yes, logically, the the numbers would go up as our costs go up. The other factor that comes at play here is the number of applications. That varies from year to year as well. So sometimes if you get more applications, that will close that gap a little bit more. So we we're recommending, we've been thinking about this for a little bit with the CPI, whether we want to go to CPI adjustment. We would recommend at least, we recommend that we go to a five-year review and that we, instead of applying CPI, so there might be the last two years that if our volume of application is actually down, the gap may be bigger, but if we have more application, that will be negligible. The main reason, really, when you're looking at fees that are going up by CPI, you're getting into numbers that your application will cost 5,341. And you know, like for us, as you see in the fees that we're proposing, they're very like, it's going to be 5,500, 6,500, which is, to me, I think it's an easier number to communicate. That's that's really the only reason.
Councilor Prodrick, did I say that I missed you initially? Oh, okay.
Oh, I see.
Again, through you, Mr. Chair, just so if, for example, we chose option A, and it would go from 92,000 to $200,000 in, right?
That's correct.
So where does that money go, that extra money? Does that go to lower the tax rate or what happens with that money? I'm just curious, that's all. Wait for tomorrow. Okay. Well, if you had have told me ahead of time, I wouldn't ask that question. Okay. Seriously though. May I continue?
Director Merritt would like to.
I can answer the question. Yes, it does. It does basically reduce the the levy required for to cover planning costs.
Okay, and I'll eagerly anticipate tomorrow. More in a serious note, in the pre-consultation in anything that goes, it's not mandatory, correct?
That's correct. That's not mandatory.
So I'm just going to throw this idea and take it. Could, would would there be the advantage to saying whatever the fee is? If you come in and do the pre-consult, we'll knock $300 or 100 off your fee to try and get that done so that, you know what I mean? Like maybe I hope that would speed up the process to pre-consult. I'm just wondering if that's an option you might think about, you know, to encourage people to do the pre-consultation.
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. Pre-consultation, that's correct, is not mandatory. But it does speed up, streamline the applications because we can communicate expectations, terms of reference for different studies that have the support, we can answer questions. So we we always encourage applicants to come in for pre-consultation meeting. That's the reason why we actually keep the costs very low. If you look at the comparison with other municipalities, our pre-consultation fee, 300 for planning staff and 100 for engineering staff is 400. And we are, I believe, below the average.
Can you just briefly give me an example for my own satisfaction, I guess? What's the difference between a minor and a major project?
Through you, Mr. Chair. So, for example, a minor, we'll take the minor and major zoning bylaw amendment. So a major zoning bylaw amendment is considered an application that requires a couple, like two or more studies to support the application, or it's submitted with an official plan amendment, or it's submitted with a draft plan of subdivision. So it requires that much that much more work. So that's a major application as and the rest of it will be minor.
So it's fair to say that the average homeowner who wants to come and get a deck put in, it's a minor, like there's no big deal with that. Feedback, do you get any feedback from the building community?
So, yes, so we we have one feedback. It was not related to the actual fees. They were, the feedback that we got was regarding processing of the application, which we always welcome that feedback, and we'll be meeting with the developer to actually, you know, have discussions about how we can improve processing applications. The developer specifically said that he had no issues with the proposed fees.
Other members. Oh, yep. Go ahead, Councilor Parks.
You just more or less a comment, speaking to Councilor Willis's concerns about 29 and 30. I too would like to see something in there for a CPI, just because my concern would be is if you're going to have a huge spread again when you get into the new review in 2020, 31, I guess it would be. And you're going to have a disparity, I guess, in in regards to what the amounts are that are charged in 28 up to 31, which may deflate building permits or building the building process. That would be one concern. And then if something happens in the in the fee schedule is is not done in time, we have that that ability to recapture some of that because we know that employment costs continue to escalate. So that's all.
Go ahead, Ms. Merritt.
So through you, Mr. Chair, the the thing with CPI, when we apply it across the entire range of fees, with the higher fees, it actually like increases the fees quite significantly. And that's like we we staff took a look at applying CPI for the last two years as well and felt that for the larger applications, like the draft plan of subdivision, where your application is 12, $13,000, applying CPI to that actually increases that fee quite a bit. And then we're getting into the realm of, you know, is the fee actually now going over the level of effort that's put forward by staff? Because that's also in the planning app, we have to keep a an open, yeah, we have to keep that in mind when we're setting fees to make sure we're not charging more than the level of efforts that we that we place. that we place. But I mean, if we're, that's why we're having the discussion tonight. So we're open to discussion. It could be CPI, it could be another percentage that we could do as well.
Council Proderick?
I'm prepared to make a motion whenever.
Yeah, Ms. Mayor, go ahead.
Sorry, the CEO had an idea here. We could do a four-year review as well. We don't have to wait five years. This is also a significant change. We haven't changed our numbers in 10 years now. So we wanted to tread cautiously.
Yep, go ahead, Mr. Mayor, and then.
Thank you. Through you. Just wanted to confirm, you'd mentioned that the developing community was aware of this. I just wanted to confirm, in the report, it mentions consultation plan, where there will be more information or consultation with the development community. Is that still going to be ongoing with them?
Through you, Mr. Chair. So with this type of, it's, we're not looking at consultation engagement. It's more like an informed engagement. So we will make sure that we inform the development community and the public as well for their resident-facing application that the fees are going up.
Thank you for that clarification.
Other questions, comments? Council Proderick, you were preparing to make a motion. Were you?
Certainly. I would recommend that the report from the Development Service Division dated November 25, 2025, re-planning application fee review be received, that the committee select option A and that staff be directed to bring forward a bylaw to prescribe tariff of fees for processing applications made in respect of planning matters to a future meeting of council for adoption.
And then what about the engineering fees? Sorry? For the major projects, do you want those waived or not?
I don't know.
Okay, we can deal with that in a separate motion. But we'll deal with what's on the floor right now.
Not on my paper.
That's fine. We'll deal with the motion that's on the floor. Yeah, Council Proderick?
Just to the suggestion of bringing it back in, say, 28 or 29, do we want that in this motion or we want to wait for it to come back to council instead of going to 2030?
I'll look to the mover for that.
I'm okay with that, given how long it's been. I think four years is reasonable.
And it would help maybe address Council Parks's concerns that we don't fall behind. Okay. So if that's.
Future meeting of council for adoption with a review in four years, which will be 2028, 29.
Yep, okay. I'm going to look for a second or first because I didn't. You're going to second?
I will second with that.
I was realizing I'm not doing good procedure. Okay, second or, okay. Discussion.
I've got the one that was in the front hall. It doesn't have that on it. Yeah, okay. Sorry about that. I've got the one from the front hall. The section, any staff be directed to bring forward a bylaw. I did that. Where's the other one? Yeah. We're open.
She'll be okay in the morning. All right, comments on the motion? No mover? Yeah, Council Willis.
Just, we've seen in these last couple of years how very quickly the landscape can change with building permits and things like that. And I would just hope that the final policy has some level of flexibility that a future council can relook at it if something dramatically changes.
Council, this looks good. Okay. With that, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Given the request from staff, I would seek the committee's direction with respect to the engineering fees. Mr. Mayor?
I couldn't write fast enough to get it all. So if you would like to present it again, the additional item, I'd be prepared to move it.
Okay, so the three, Mr. Chair. Staff would like to propose that the $500 fee be waived if an, for engineering review, if an OPA and/or zoning bylaw amendment are submitted with a draft plan of subdivision application. And this could be done by adding a footnote to the fee schedule.
Okay. I would, I'd move that.
You moved that, so moved, seconded by Council Parks. Over any comment?
No.
Council Parks, anyone else? No. Call the question. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Is that good? All right. Can I get a motion to adjourn Committee of the Whole? Council Proderick, seconded by Council Parks. All those in favor? Motion is carried. We are adjourned. Committee of the Whole, it's.
Okay, so we will reconvene the council meeting. Next item on, are there any notices of motion this evening? Seeing none, are there any direct motions to be presented this evening? Seeing none, consent agenda? We have a number of items here that can all be lumped together or extracted. Are there any that any members wish to extract this evening? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion for the entire group. Council Proderick?
I would move that all the items in the consent agenda dated November 25, 2025 be approved as presented and that necessary action be taken.
So moved, seconded by Council Willis. Any comments for the mover? Seconder? Other members? Call the question. All in favor? Motion is passed. Moving along. Announcements, are there any announcements this evening from council? Council Proderick?
I would just like to congratulate Annie Nieman from Holy Cross Secondary School, who is, I believe, a grade 11 student now. She's on the Ontario High Performance Wrestling Team and she won a gold medal at an event in Oslo, Norway on Wednesday.
Norway? Nice. Very good. Any other announcements this evening? Council Willis?
I would like to send condolences to the family of Coram again. She died in her 91st year, was a beloved mother, grandmother, great-grandmother and filled Warpman's last week with the service for her. And she's a big loss to the island.
Thank you. Any other announcements this evening? Seeing none, I'm just going to do one. I believe all of council are aware, but the Frontenac Heritage Foundation selected Loyalist Township as the recipient of the 2025 Heritage Conservation Award in recognition of the exceptional restoration work completed at the Fairfield Goodsite House. So on November 12, I attended the award ceremony along with the two of the key staff members, the Cultural Development Coordinator and the Project Coordinator, to receive the award on behalf of Loyalist. I'd like to thank the Frontenac Heritage Foundation for recognizing the work that was performed at the Fairfield Goodsite House, all the staff members involved in the project and many trades and experts that worked on the project as well, as well as council for supporting this project that truly is a gem on the lake. So we did receive this award that evening and it will be placed in someplace where, I'm not sure where yet, but it will be placed in an appropriate location that will recognize the project. And staff are already thinking about locations to place it. So I just wanted to make council aware and the public that we have been recognized for the extensive work that was done on the Fairfield Goodsite House and the excellent workmanship and staff dedication to the project throughout it. Thank you. So with that, if there's no other? Whoops, I better get back here. Confirmatory by, do I have a mover for the confirmatory? Council Proderick?
I recommend the bylaw 2025-72 to confirm the proceedings of council of Loyalist Township be enacted and passed and the mayor and clerk be authorized to sign and seal.
So moved, seconded by Deputy Mayor Town. All in favor? Motion is passed and I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Council Willis? Council Budrick seconded. All in favor? Motion is passed.